Hello?
Hey Eric, can you hear me? It's Lydia.
Crystal clear.
Am I too loud this?
No, your mic's all set.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, it was a weird, weird setting that you had last time. I don't know what that was, but, but if nobody tells you, you'll never know. By the way, you're on mute.
Yeah, thanks. It was beautiful today. Did everybody get out?
Nope, I'm heading out in a minute, though. I can't actually be here, so I figured I'd stop in and bother everyone for a moment.
Oh, okay.
Playoffs.
For which sport?
Hockey.
Oh, cool.
So.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, how are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Help you land the plane. Look like a pilot there with your headset.
Uh, yeah, that, yeah, these monitors don't have microphones.
But you sound great. You sound great. You really do. Oh, yeah, well, you're always great. I mean, that goes without saying. Yep.
Where's Ingram? There's nobody from Ingram. What's up? I'm gonna start texting folks. What's going on?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
Should we give Ingram people a few minutes to join? Um, I'll say I am also not having the greatest luck right now. My computer will not turn on.
That's awesome.
So I'm joined from an iPad, but I can't share anything from my iPad because it's not linked to anything, so I'm not going to be able to share.
Do you want me to pull up the agenda?
Um, sure, if you want to get started. I'm trying to restart my computer for the second time.
Hi, guys. I'm just gonna be, this is Greg Wasniak. So I'll just be, uh, listening in and commenting later. So I'll turn my camera off so that I don't interrupt you guys.
Well, thank you for joining us. You are welcome to join us.
Thank you very much.
Shall we call to order?
I guess so. I'm texting Ingram. I'm not sure where these guys are.
Hey, while they're joining, I, I have to go to hockey playoffs. Um, so do you want to maybe approve our minutes from our last meeting while I'm here? Take care of that.
We can start with that if Lydia is able to share, then I, I'm still not.
Yeah, she's already up and she's way ahead of you, man. She's, uh, she's sharing, she's there. We're all good, so. All right, so it's, uh, has everyone had a chance to look at the, uh, the red lines, the actual bona fide red lines, by the way? It's been a while since I've seen real red lines.
I still use RedPen.
I haven't seen it. I'm sorry, I'm reading it.
That's okay, Greg. This is just for Crafton anyway.
Yeah, this is our last month.
Okay.
You're good.
Cool, then I'm gonna save this PDF real quick.
Cool.
So the one point of confusion in this was the park planning update. I wasn't, the minutes kind of captured that the 26,000 is going to be used for the pool house, but I remembered it differently. I wanted to just bring that question up to see if we could correct it.
I think your note is correct. The 26,000 was secured as funding for a park plan update.
Yeah.
Um, and there are additional funds that had been previously earned that can be earmarked that, um, were available if Crafton wanted to take them up on it, and then they did decide to take them up on it for the pool house updates, but that was, that was separate funding that had been acquired in a previous year.
I, I would just say, um, council said they would be pursuing, um, funding for pool house updates, right? We don't know what the funding exactly is because it's not been awarded. It was awarded in the past and we turned it down, that was years ago. Um, so they're saying, hey, you guys should apply again, do the same thing, but update your park plan. And just so happens, we've got the grant to update the park plan. So they're two separate, two separate issues. The 26,000 is update park plan. Uh, once the park plan is updated, then we'll be in a good seat to apply for those, um, uh, those grant funds. Um, for what was awarded before, which was an update of the pool house, which council is already, you know, thinking about and moving forward on, so.
We could also just remove mention of the pool house because that was not something that we discussed.
Yeah, it's not our.
Except as a peripheral item. I, I, I believe it's something that is actually the opposite order. You said, um, Eric, the pool house, the funds are already available because they were previously earmarked. But, um, but again, if, if it's easier to just remove that, that's not something that we discussed in detail or had any hand in. We just peripherally mentioned that we had heard that there was funds that for the full pool house that council was talking about that's separate from funds for the park plan.
Yeah, we can just strike that whole, right? We can pursue additional funding and leave it there, right? Just strike the sentence and call it a day.
Rich, are you clear on that? Is Rich on?
Yeah, he's muted, though.
He was saying he's having trouble, uh, getting those sound.
Hmm.
Quite a day for technology, isn't it?
I'm currently having an issue myself.
We've become dependent.
Well, there are no updates this month. It was mentioned that funds are in place for, let's see, it was mentioned that funds are in place.
For the park planning update.
For the park plan update. Um, there is additional funding council is pursuing for a pool house update.
That works.
Do we want to go ahead and approve, or should we? We still can't hear Rich.
I'll motion to approve with those changes. That's helpful, but Rich is still, he's giving us a, hopefully that's a thumbs up. Might be another finger. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with approving it contingent upon those changes.
Okay, I'll agree.
Agreed.
Is there anything else we should handle before Eric needs to leave?
Well, everything, of course. Eric, we will miss you for, but.
You can always reload.
Pick up again next month. Um, and we'll, we'll give you a download after tonight of anything we discuss. Um, there are no big decisions that are happening tonight. We're just moving, moving our usual agenda forward, so.
So I, I will put out there and we can, we can talk at some point following. Are we gonna do a workshop in April?
We're going to talk about that today. I, I'm not sure that we should, but, um, that, that is on our agenda to talk about today.
Well, let me, uh, let me, let me, you guys can talk later, um, et cetera, but let me throw two things out there. Um, I'd like to propose that we make a recommendation to council to bring back the dumpster in celebration of Earth Day.
I happen to be at the park with Public Works today for a community garden issue and mentioned that. And they suggested the parking lot at the park near where the, um, troops collect cans. Aluminum cans in lieu of the, the park and ride parking lot.
Yeah, I think they.
But it would be great if we followed through with them on that, but they were amenable to it.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a smart thing for us to recommend. Where they stick it, there's plenty of places to put it. I don't think putting it on a brand new surface that just was repaved is a good idea, especially when, you know, people are actually using it now to commute to work and that sort of thing. So, um, you know, finding a new location is fine, but, um, it's just making the recommendation. So, um, I'd like to propose it. Would somebody want to second it so we can make it a formal thing off the council?
I'll second.
Yeah, you got two seconds.
And, uh, oh, do we need a vote?
All in favor? I?
Hi. Hi.
All right.
We still don't have, we just still don't have any sound from Rich and he can't hear us either.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right, well, maybe you can delay closing it until he gain, he joins, joins audio. Um, the other thing is, I, I'm fine if we don't do a workshop, but if we did do an art workshop, I think doing a workshop just exploring what an eco district is without saying we're doing it, right? It's not ours to do, but just to expose the community to, um, like the glorious stuff in the brain dump doc. Um, putting together an agenda like that, and I'm, I'm happy to volunteer some cycles to put together that in the meantime. So if we wanted to pick a date, I'll make it happen. Okay?
Sounds good.
I just think that, you know, doing something Earth Day, talk about East Eco Districts and saying, oh, by the way, you know, that maybe the dumpster is already here by then, or the dumpster is coming, or bloody blah. Um, I think it's just a nice, you know, kind of a little package. So we could, we could certainly, I could fill an hour. I'm sure you guys can fill an hour better, but I could fill an hour.
We were gonna talk about that today, and Eric, I know that you weren't able to stay, but, um, we will, we will keep you signed up for anything we go forward on and, and follow up with you after this, so that.
And Kirsten, um, in the, in the, the, the community doc, I put a couple of things in there, just, just some, some brain dumps that aren't the eco district things. We can talk about it later, but you'll see it when you go and you're like, what the heck is that? I put it at the end. But I'll, I'll work on formatting this and cleaning it up, too. Okay?
Great.
All right. See y'all.
Thanks, Eric. Bye.
Yeah.
Go baby penguins.
Good luck. Yeah, good luck at the hockey game.
Um, well, we have, um, let's go ahead and do roll call. Do we, are we waiting for anyone from Ingram still?
I, I texted them. I haven't had, I don't have a response yet.
Okay, well, we can always, you know, we're a flexible bunch. We can turn our, our agenda in a different order and come back. Let's start with our roll call for now. Um, so Kirsten, Compatello, I'm here.
Uh, Greg Butler, I'm here.
Lydia Herring's here.
Uh, we have Rich Kramer who's here and has no sound, and we'll try to see if he is able to give us a here shortly.
I can hear you guys now.
Great, we can hear you, too.
Well, we might have to come back to our roll call also because it looks like Colton is also, um, signing back on again.
Yeah, that was strange. I couldn't hear anybody. I could see twenty of you talking, Eric and you and Lydia and.
Well, we intended to start at 6:30, didn't we? All right, well, welcome. We do have another citizen who just joined. We are, we are all having a little bit of technological difficulty getting on today, so we're still getting, um, all of our commissioners to get online. This has not been an issue in the past. This is the first time we've had such major difficulties getting everyone to connect.
Yes, Colton back on you? No?
He's not, no.
Do we want to open it up for citizen comments in the meantime?
Um, sure. Do we have any citizen comments from those who are on the line? Feel free to unmute yourself.
Hey, this is Greg. How you guys doing?
Hey, Greg.
Hey, Greg.
Hi, Greg.
Hey, uh, I was just, uh, getting on. I wanted to see, um, you know, about a month and a half ago, me and, uh, me and James Manchin did a, uh, presentation, and I think that you guys said you're gonna pass it to the school board. And I just was checking whether or not that was passed to the school board, if you got any comments on it.
It, it was passed to the school board and, um, they received it positively, but basically just said that, um, they had signed a developer's agreement with the developer and they're waiting on council's decision with, until they can do anything. So it's basically all just on hold until Crafton Council makes a, a vote for or against the, the issue at hand. So it, it's basically all on pause right now, from what I understand.
I have not heard anything back since.
Okay, all right. So no, any follow-up that we should be doing with them or with anybody? I know you haven't heard anything back, and I, I mean, and I know that they're waiting for the borough, but, um, and I know the borough, I think, is holding off on doing anything for a while. So.
Yeah, I'd encourage you to, to talk with council or bring it up to council that
Okay.
um, he's interested in them making a decision or actually putting it on the agenda. They've been reluctant to put the topic on the agenda again.
Okay. All right, well, I'll hang in there for the rest of the meeting and maybe see it, see you at the end.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, thanks. Bye-bye.
Do we have any other citizen comments? Since we, we opened it up, we have Patty on the line. Do you have anything you wanted to open with? Right, well, we have citizen comments at the end as well, so we will come back to that. We do have a few more of our commissioners that have made it on the line now. Um, hopefully that's the end of our technological difficulties. So let's go ahead and do our, um, our official roll call. Let's just do it again now that we have, we have more of us on the line. So Kirsten Compatello, I am here.
Greg Butler, I'm here.
Lydia Herring's here.
Rich Kramer's here.
Colton Chandler's here.
Aaron Sigler, what's this here?
All right, great. Well, thank you all for being here. Um, we have next on our agenda for the Ingram Borough Planning Commission to share some of their updates. Do you guys, are you guys ready to start?
I think so. Good to see you, Aaron. Uh, I don't really have a lot of updates, unfortunately. Um, we did have a meeting a week ago. I was not able to attend because of a work conflict that came up pretty quickly, so I don't know if Aaron and Jim met. Uh, did you guys meet, Aaron?
We did not.
Okay, so no updates, at least for the, our first quarterly meeting. Uh, and then, you know, the pedestrian grant, which is really being run by, mostly by the planning commission for the, for the intersection of Ingram Avenue and, uh, West Prospect Avenue. And there's 7-Eleven there in Ingram is, uh, we had a kickoff meeting. It went really well. We're planning a kind of walkthrough of the area to start to really drill down on what, what the problems are. I guess we had a kind of a general discussion of it, so that's starting to go forward, which is pretty exciting. Um, that's really all I've been doing planning-wise. I, I want to apologize ahead of time for not adding to the eco district brain dump. I really want to do that, and I really love the idea. So, um, I also, since our last meeting, started a new position, so, um, that caught me off guard completely. I know I always say I'm busy, but I was, I've never been this busy. So I'm still at work. I still have to be at work after this meeting, so, um, it'll, it'll get under control. I have a bunch of reporting to do that's due by the end of the month, so when that's done, I feel like I'll have a little breathing room to start contributing to the eco district, which I think is our concentration. Um, that and the zoning, hopefully, because that all goes through this year, so that's really my only update.
Okay, well, that's, that's a good update. Um, Aaron, did you have anything to add? Should we move on to Crafton?
I do not have anything to add.
Yeah, I know. I, um, I'm excited to see Ingram doing the active transportation because it'd be great to see that spill over into Crafton. I know we, we were talking about going after something similar for Crafton next year, um, the multimodal grant. So we'll be watching to see what happens in Ingram.
Yep, exciting.
Um, our Crafton Borough Planning Commission updates. Um, there's no huge surprises here. Uh, we did, um, go after funding to redo our master plan. That hasn't started yet. Um, as you just saw when we reviewed last month's minutes, we talked about this last month as well. Um, council had gone after a grant to get the master plan, Parks Master Plan updated. Um, it was done a number of years ago, um, and they have already decided to go ahead by, by having that same firm just do an update for the plan. Um, but that hasn't actually started yet, so no, um, no news on that yet. Nothing has kicked off, but that should probably be, be getting started later this spring. Um, funding is acquired and the consultant will be the same consultant from, from the last iteration, so all pretty ready to go. Um, and we should have more information about that in the coming months, um, especially for those of our citizens who are on the line who might be interested in hearing what this is about. Uh, we should have more information about that in the next, um, month or two, but that will definitely involve some public outreach. Um, the consultant will have to do some public outreach, so there will be, I'm sure there will be more information about that upcoming. Um, the Crafton Planning Commission held our, um, our next workshop in our series in early February. It was focused on the streetscape project, um, along Crafton Boulevard. Um, it was an interesting workshop. Engineers attended and unveiled some changes in their, their plans that evening that no one was aware of, so it went a little differently than we had expected. Um, but, uh, got some, got some discussion going, and, um, there was, there was a lot of talk about a particular intersection and whether there should be a stop sign or not. Um, and that is a little out of the planning commission's hands at this point, um, because it sounds like council, last I heard as of last month, and we talked about this at last month's meeting. Um, council had already. Because it sounds like council, last I heard as of last month, and we talked about this at last month's meeting, council had already talked to the engineers about keeping a stop sign. Haven't seen any changes from the engineers on that streetscape project since, but I will follow up. I'll follow up this month to see where their, where their status is and if anything has changed since that February workshop. Besides the stop sign, obviously, which the stop sign is staying. And then the map grant status. I have not heard anything and that probably would go through you, Lydia. But you didn't forward anything.
I haven't seen anything since last month's email, just basically saying we are still in the running, but they couldn't promise anything and they still hope to award it to us, but we wouldn't know until the end of the month.
Um, and I know that our council has not been prioritizing moving forward with the zoning at this time. So there are no, no updates to share on either the grant status or, or the zoning.
Can I ask a question to Greg? Did, did Ingram sign that EPD extension letter?
Well, we passed it. I just, you know what? I didn't, I didn't check with Debbie. I should check. I'll make a note. I'm, I just assumed we did. But I will check. I'm sorry.
But our council did not. Crafton Council did not. They have not been putting, they have not been prioritizing it on their agenda. They are waiting.
Oh, they are waiting for yes or no on the grant?
Um, I they are waiting because there are concerns about legal conflicts.
Oh.
Because by rezoning, you open up. It is a legal document and they're concerned that they want to fully understand the legal implications of opening up the community to rezoning.
Okay. Well, we'll see where that goes.
That was a conversation that is being had with the solicitor.
Yeah.
Last I heard.
Okay, I'm surprised.
So that is, those are our updates, the, the three big things that have happened since, since our last joint planning commission meeting in November. Is there anything else from the group that you want to add?
No.
All right. Well, with that, the next thing on the agenda was that ECO district discussion. Our Crafton and Ingram Planning Commissions have talked about this on and off over the past year and started to think about the, what, what the ECO district could mean for Crafton and Ingram and whether this is something that we would like to consider doing here. So we wanted to revisit that discussion and open it up today. We do have that brain dump document that was started for, for the plant, the two planning commissions to just start sharing some ideas and thinking about how we understand what the ECO district is and what, what we might, how we might see it applying to our communities. And I did go in and add some information this week. So for anyone who hasn't had a chance to look at it, I know I just did it. I just added some information yesterday. But I also added some case studies from other communities. And then all the information that's, that's in that brain dump document. So right, so this is what I had put in here. I'm not sure if anyone else had put in anything up. Also, I took some information from the ECO district website about what the ECO district is. And also some information from New Sunrise, which is the organization that supported Millvale ECO district that we have here locally that has a lot of similar features in their community that, that we have in Crafton and Ingram. And they'd had some really good language about just what an ECO district is and the value that it brings to the community. A lot of this language here is fairly generic, but it talks about how the goal of the ECO district is to grow positive and thriving places. How sustainable development practice, practices build on community strengths and help bring in positive growth and prioritize equity, resiliency and climate protection. I thought a lot, there was a lot of language there that I thought was just really, really good baseline description in fairly easy to understand terms. Of what, what it is and how it works for the community, how it supports local assets, local character, the local population and builds up resiliency and equity and just creates, like they say, positive and thriving places. It supports the physical environment and also the social environment and also the economic environment. And then the next thing I did is I put in some ideas and these are partly things that I was thinking of that are, that we that we could benefit from here in Crafton and Ingram and also partly inspired by things that other communities have done with their ECO districts. So these are, these are all pretty solid examples of the types of things that, that can qualify for ECO district. So I'd listed out a couple of different things here. Air quality is a really big issue in our region. Now, this is a pretty important one for me, for me personally. This is one I feel strongly about. That's also one that has been a big issue that our other local ECO districts have focused on. Aetna, Millvale and Charpsburg have all focused on, including including cleaner air elements and air monitors and landscape elements to help clean the air, the air, improving the air quality has been a big part of, of those local plans. Flood and landslide prevention was another one I thought of that is something that impacts our communities quite a bit, especially with the hills and the creek that we have here nearby with a lot of, a lot of slopes, but also a lot of a lot of land that's susceptible to flooding. Community health and services. We've seen this one a lot during COVID especially. We have people who have a difficult time getting to services. We have a lot of services, but not always the best transportation between them or access to them for those with limited mobility or hours that are available at all times for things like the food pantry or just people knowing, just advocacy and awareness of knowing where those resources are. That is something that the ECO district can really focus on. Active living, health, getting outdoors, things like trails, sidewalks, safe streets. I don't know. Anyone else can interject. I don't, I don't want to do all the talking, reading through it. But those are some ideas. And then if you go down a little further, I'd also put in this is a little more high level. We talked about this document starting to also put together some ideas for how we might describe this to other people. Not just what sort of initiatives and projects might come out of it, but how do we talk about, you know, how, why the ECO district itself, what is the whole point of it? And so I put in a few bullet points about that, about how having a plan that's really well put together, it supports helping us get funding and the whole structure of doing an ECO district is very well. It requires, it's built around this concept of collaborative governance and it requires very consistent and thorough community involvement. And I think that our communities are eager to do that. We have, we have communities, we have residents who are very, very willing and interested in being involved if they just know how and they just know where. And this is a system where it really puts planning into the hands of the people. And is structured to not just come up with the plan, but equip the residents to implement it and follow it through. I think that's one of the greatest values.
I love that. I love that piece about sharing resources between Crafton and Ingram. If, if both of us are going toward this ECO district thing, there's going to be certain programs that make a lot of sense to share resources and then, you know, some that don't make that much sense, but that's fine. I, I just think that's such a, a perfect way to capture you know, where it makes sense. We should be sharing resources between the two communities. And the, the food pantry is a perfect example of that.
Yeah, we, we could keep going. I mean, there are so many things that we could put into this and if we were to go after an ECO district, a lot of those concepts and ideas would come out of a community led process to come up with them all. So all of these things now are really just ideas to help study, start to describe to ourselves and to the community, what kinds of benefits we could get out of this. It, it is not at all to say that we are writing it all and because we're not, the list of what we end up, you know, what those categories are, what those programs or plans are that we want to include in, in an ECO district plan. If we do it, all of that would be, would be put together over the course of a year, at least, along with community input.
So there's some really good ideas here. Do, do you work with in your, in your profession? Do you work with other communities with this? Have you seen this put into action?
Um, well, I, I am.
Maybe even with Aetna or Millville.
Yes and no. I have not worked on an ECO district professionally. I have done the certification. So I'm pretty familiar with the handbook and the way it's set up. And I've read through some of those case studies to see how other people are doing it. But I haven't been involved in any of the ECO districts here.
I was just curious because this is everything I believe in for sure. I mean, and it feels like, so you know, I worked on the comp plan as did Lydia with Crafton Ingram, and I'm working one on, on one now with Elizabeth Township. It, it sound, you know, a lot of these are sort of comp plan concepts, but I actually think they're a higher level because it's more of a philosophy than a perhaps a prescriptive directive like a comp plan could be. And I just wonder how communities incorporate this. So this is a lot of big information, which always intimidates me a little bit. But I realize that when we start moving forward, we'll pick a few ideas, right? We'll start to drill down. We'll, we'll, I guess we'll identify what's important to us and hopefully ask our communities what's important to them, which will drive the beginning actions. But I just wonder how, so you have a planning commission, you have residents and you have a council. And it's a lot of moving parts. I would imagine the council would have to embrace this to some point.
It's a little bit more a little separate than that. And there's another document that's in that shared folder for the planning commissions that was shared some point last year when we first started talking about this, that recaps the handbook itself and goes into a little bit more like the steps of the process. But there, there are two things that, that you said that I would just respond to. First, you said that it seems like it's more high level than a comp plan. I would say that it's actually the opposite. The way that communities are using this, you know, I, I started with some fairly high level ideas here, but the value of the comp plan is that it's, it's created along with really solid and continuous community involvement and support. And then it's also, it includes, it is required to include performance standards. So the ideas that come out of it end up being very specific. So I would say it's, it's more specific than a comprehensive plan. It will say, for example, you know, we might talk about as a, as a high level idea, we want to include sharing, improve sharing of resources between Crafton and Ingram. But a specific result that might come out of that could be a certain church in collaboration with a certain nonprofit are going to pair together to open the food pantry three days a week instead of one.
Okay.
Just an example I made up, but they tend to be sort of broad, high level ideas that are then distilled into a very specific action that can be measured and measured for its performance.
It, so just so I understand it better, is that the document or is the document more of a, what I call a philosophical document? More of a driving, you know, the principles behind the actions?
The document is both. It's the principles behind it and then the list of actions and performance standards.
Okay.
And here's where there's a difference between ECO district with a little e and ECO district with a big E. Because we could, we could do the whole planning process using the philosophy, but not get it certified. But then it, the ECO district with the big E is a certification process that's run by like organization, ECO district organization. And then you have to submit your performance results every two years and show, you know, how many of your actions have you completed and how are they performing?
Okay. Do you think that's one of our goals?
I think that's really a question for the planning commissions to think about. And as we move forward, if we go more towards this, then it would be a question we would put out to the communities at large as well. There's a cost involved with doing the official certification. But from what I'm, from what I know of other communities, they, they always get somebody to, to fund it, to get a grant. To fund doing it. And so if we were to pursue certification, we certainly would want to, to get funding for it and not be paying for it.
Well, I'm anxious to get it started. I don't really know how, but I guess we could as a committee, as a joint, two committees joining together, I guess.
I mean, one, one first step, if we all want to continue with this, is we could reach out to connect. We are both Crafton and Ingram, our communities that participate and connect and connect has been supportive of the, the other local ECO districts. And so we could ask them to share what knowledge or resources they have and help us get get those starting steps underway. There may be other places to reach out too, but that, that's one that, that I can think of.
So how could they help us, do you think? Listen, what would be the first step? You may not know the answer to that, but like the, besides this conversation, right? And because we've been tossing this around for a while and, you know, I think this and zoning are probably the two most important things we can do over the next year or two.
I would say we could, we could reach out to connect. We could do the same thing for the county, perhaps the economic development branch of the county. Send an email and say that we're, that our two communities are interested in this and we would like to speak with somebody who's been involved. I know that connect, that both the county and connect have supported ECO district planning in, in our other, in the communities here that have done it in Millvale and Aetna. So ask if we could speak to someone who's been involved with that and help them ask them to help us figure out what the steps are to get started and if they can provide any, any support for us as we do it.
Okay, that's a great idea. I know when I was at LGA, the manager of, I think it was Millville. Does anyone know her? Mary Ellen, I think her name is. Mary Ellen Ramage, I think. I, I think she's in Millville or Aetna. I think it's Millville.
Aetna.
Oh, Aetna. Figures, I got it wrong. I know she was really involved though, and she's, I know she's a really good manager. She's been around a long time. I bet she could be helpful.
We can reach out to Mary Ellen. I know that Phil met with her back in December, November, December. He met with her about, about ECO districts. So he's already made that connection. We can reach out to her again and ask. I want to say that they, one of the things that they did to get started was get grant funding that they partially got through Connect. get grant funding that they partially got through Connect. And I'm not sure if I'm remembering that right, but I know Connect was involved. And I know we are both Connect communities, so that certainly, there's no reason for us not to start by asking.
Right.
Well, I'm happy to put together a draft of an email, and then we can, we can share it and see if we all want to sign onto it. Or I'm done with that. It would just be just be an exploratory email saying, we're interested in doing this. We'd like to talk to someone who has been involved with the previous ones, who can help us figure out what our first steps could be and how we could find support to get this going.
Yeah, I'm all for it. I think these are, these are just incredibly necessary ideas for sustainable communities.
Kirsten, do you know who ultimately is in charge of, like, providing metrics or keeping track of all that? If we were to go for certification, would it be the borough offices?
It would be, there's not a set answer, but it would be an entity that would be determined throughout the process of setting up the eco district. And what most places have done is they've created a new entity or a new commission to handle that. New Sun Rising did that role in Millville. And that was a nonprofit organization that, and I don't know their full history, but from what I, from what I did understand, they they were, they started, they began in the first place because of the eco district funding. They were a nonprofit that was born out of that project to manage it. And then I think have branched out into other things since.
They're still, they're still in existence, correct? Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know if I've gotten their whole history right, but that's what I understood. They've kind of been created out of that funding to lead and manage the eco district. And that's a part of, that's one of the steps of doing the certified eco district in the first place. You have to identify who the responsible parties will be and get those people on board. And they generally recommend that it be not council or not an entity that's already tasked with something else. But something that is formed by people who want to focus on that. So a new commission, an eco district commission or a nonprofit entity.
Okay.
That allows for some rotation of people as well. Somebody that's in it originally moves out of Crafton or Ingram, they could be replaced by another resident.
Yeah, and there are a lot of places that have done the eco district planning, but not done the certification, including Uptown here in Pittsburgh. Did an Uptown eco district plan, but did not pursue certification. They just did the plan and are doing their own thing with it. So there's certainly no, there's no right way we can decide as we go through this, how we want, what we want it to be for us. Do we, should we take a vote on whether we put together an email?
Yeah, I think that would be good. I guess Aaron had to leave. He just texted me. I know he's all for it, though. I'll speak for him. I'm all for it, obviously.
Yeah, I'll second it, hasn't already been seconded.
Okay. Yeah, I'll put together a draft and then send it to the planning commissions, to both of them. And then Ingram, you guys can make any edits or suggestions before we send it out.
Are we doing separate drafts for DCD and Connect, or just sending the email to Connect to begin with?
Seems like it could be the same text to both. Does anyone have a good contact at DCD that would be a good person particularly to reach out to for the eco district?
I'll do a search. Maybe there's somebody flagged for that online.
I know that, I know that Darla, blinking on her last name, who works for the county, she was a big supporter for it. And I can certainly reach out to her, but I don't know if anyone else has another contact.
Not really, not directly related to that. I mean, I know Michael Foreman, but I'm not really sure if he would get involved in that. I don't really know.
Is it Darla Cravada?
Yes. Yeah, I'd probably reach out to her.
Hi, Jim.
Sounds good.
So I could apologize, but obviously I confused the 23rd with the 25th.
It happens.
That's okay. It's that kind of week.
Yeah, there's been, there's a lot going on.
This is also the first joint meeting. We've started at 6:30, I think.
That really wasn't the issue. There's just a lot going on. I'm sorry.
It's fine. We're glad to have you.
I'm more of a listener than anything else, though.
We are, we have been talking about the the concept of an eco district and how it, what it is and what it could offer to Crafton Ingram.
I read about, I read about it.
And we had just decided that we were going to put together an email to the county and to Connect, which are two entities that have supported the other eco districts that have happened in this region, in Etna, Millville, and Charpsburg. And just indicate that Crafton and Ingram are interested and would like to would like to talk with them further about what we can do to get started and who would be the best the best resource for us to help us figure out what our next steps are and how to get this going.
Sure. Okay. Well, just assume I'm here listening. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, and then one of our, so we did have Eric on the line very early, and he wasn't able to stay, but he had kind of skipped to the end of our agenda, where our Crafton Commission was going to talk about our next workshop. And we hadn't really talked about doing an April workshop on eco district, but Eric had tossed out that maybe we should. So do we, do we want to talk about that while we have Ingram here with us? If we are planning to, if we are interested at the planning commission level in pursuing the idea of an eco district plan, do we want to set up something where we start to present this to the community as a possibility and tell them what it's about and get people to to know that this is something that we're interested in?
I think that's a good idea. I think we're gonna need, you know, we're gonna need help. You know, we could present it and see if anyone's interested in helping us.
All the others who have done it have had a consultant work with them through the process. So this would all be just initial steps, letting people know that we're interested in this and getting the community aware and involved ahead of time. But we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be writing a plan by ourselves.
Right. Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I don't know if it's too early or not, but I think it's a good idea. I don't know if there's anything we should do as planning commissions to be more focused or, you know, or just present with, I mean, what you did here is explains it very well, very well. Any thoughts on that? I mean, just present it as it's presented here, more or less, as the very high level? It could be, it could be any of this or all of this.
At our February Crafton meeting, we talked about having a workshop in April. It's kind of an Earth Day theme. Would we want to do something like this in April? I think if we are going after, if we're presenting this as both a Crafton and an Ingram endeavor, there's no reason why we can't have two different educational sessions for Crafton and Ingram. But there's also no reason why we can't have an informational session that we invite Crafton and Ingram to, if we're going to do it. I don't see why we wouldn't, we wouldn't invite everyone from both communities to log on and listen in.
Right.
Is April too soon? No? Do we think that's a good idea to link it to Earth Day?
I don't think it's too soon, as long as we presented, you know, as it's presented here, I think. You know, just, it would be just an overview, which is what this is.
Just an informational session. This is something that the planning commissions have been seeing happen in the region and interested in talking about, bringing here, talking about whether this is something that we can do here. Just an informational session.
Yeah, I love it.
Are we, are we going through examples that we see in the region? Or more just explaining the definition and the types of categories?
I'm very open to everyone's thoughts on this. So Colton and Rich, I would love to hear what you guys think, too. I would say that it should be a little mix of some of the basics of what it is and some of the basics of the process and procedure and how it works. Especially the community collaboration and governance piece of it. And then also, a little bit of the, a little bit of the case studies showing that this is what some of our neighboring communities have done. And then I don't know if it's getting into too much to talk about. Or if we would want to give some examples of those kinds of things that could apply here in our communities, too, just to get people to understand examples of what this could mean.
I'd say I definitely agree. I think we need to do, I would say, all those things that you just mentioned, especially the community collaboration and the you know, the case studies. I think if we show people what other communities have done, I think that's helpful. I know I particularly, like, whenever we looked at it together, when we looked at the, I forget exactly what they were called, the rain. I don't think they were called rain gardens, but like, in the sidewalks where they had the metal, that they had it in different different ways that it looked, and it looked like leaves or something like that. I can't remember exactly what it looked like.
Great, yeah.
Yeah, great, exactly. I think that was, you know, I think visually seeing things that the communities have done is definitely helpful. I think that's good for, especially the community to see. But yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's probably the best way to go. I would definitely include all those things, if not more. I don't know how much we would be able to fit of all of those, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say any less than that if we can help it, as far as, you know, kind of getting it out there to the community to at least for them to be able to understand it better.
Yeah, I agree, Colton. It always helps to bring it, bring it down to earth, you know? Instead of just presenting it as a, I keep saying that high-level idea, but I mean, you know, it's it would help to have examples.
Yeah, I mean, I personally learn and can see things better if I can physically see it in front of me. So, you know, I mean, if that's, at least I think that that's easier. I know everybody doesn't necessarily learn that way, but I think in most cases, it's probably helpful. So I think definitely the more examples we can give, the better, for sure.
Makes sense to make sure that it's limited to about an hour, though, with some discussion time afterwards, so we're not overwhelming people with anything longer than an hour.
Right, absolutely.
And if there's a lot of interest, that would be great to see. What we might end up doing is doing another one, follow-up, month or two afterwards. At which point, we may have had some feedback from from the county, from Connect, and figured out what we can do to, some of what some of our first steps are to get started, or what kind of funding sources we can go after to help us get started.
Logistically, I'm a little bit worried with just preparing a presentation for next month and then having everybody have speaking roles that know, you know, we're not going to meet again unless we choose to meet again and have, you know, have enough time to advertise.
Earth Day.
Just putting that out there.
Yeah, Earth Day is April 22nd. What, when would we want to do something like this? Do we want to tie it to that, or do we want to wait a little longer? What is people's availability? Our next meeting, look at the calendars, our next planning commission meeting is the 27th.
Crafton's, yeah.
Our Crafton meeting will be the 27th of April.
I like the idea of tying it to Earth Day, but I know that April, at least starting this week, tomorrow is going to be pretty busy for me. Budgets at work, so it's going to be hell, for lack of a better term, for the next month, month and a half. So I mean, like I said, I like the idea of doing it with Earth Day, because I think that makes sense, but I don't know if, I agree with Lydia. I think it's going to be tough to try and pull it together that quickly.
Kirsten, are you, your April, leading up to April is busy for you, right? You had an accreditation.
I am relatively okay in April, but I am doing accreditation. I mean, I've been working on this for months, and I'm going to be pursuing my exams in May. So the closer we get to May, the more, the more, yeah, the more stressed I will be.
I think we could probably make it as simple as we want to. If it's just the introduction, we could probably do one next month and either have it in lieu of the planning commission, the Crafton Planning Commission meeting that's already scheduled at 6:30 on the 27th of April. Or if we thought it needed to be more obviously tied to Earth Day, we could make it on Earth Day.
Earth Day is Thursday.
Yep.
And we've usually been doing our workshops on Wednesdays. That was a day that worked well for people. Just not to say that we can't do it Thursday. We didn't, we just have, we have had most of our workshops on Wednesdays, right?
What was, what's Earth Day?
We're talking about potentially doing the workshop the 21st of April, Wednesday, the 21st.
Oh, the 21st, okay, because I'm
To keep in line with the same day of the week that we have been doing and have it tied closer to actual Earth Day, which is the 22nd.
Or maybe the following week, the 28th, it would be the day after our planning commission meetings, we would have a chance to talk. And perhaps on Earth Day, we could just ask the borough to release a one-page flyer that advertises it and gives people a little advanced information.
That's a good idea, and I think, I think we should stick with Thursdays, at least I know for my, or Wednesdays, I'm sorry. I know for myself, at least now Thursdays are, well, depending on what, every other Thursday is council meeting, so I'm pretty much out for every other Thursday. And I remember that 22nd or whatever, but anyway, Wednesday's, Wednesday's under for me, too, so. but I, I like the idea of having it after the next planning commission meeting so that we can discuss and things that day, or the following day.
What about Ingram? Would you guys be able to be involved? Do you have any, are there any Ingram area conflicts for either you or the general community that you know of?
On, on the 28th?
On the 28th or on Wednesdays in general?
There are none that I know of for the community. I have a conflict on the 28th, but I can probably get out of it. So it's not a big deal. I don't really have to be. It's a seven o'clock meeting out here, but I don't have to really be there. So I'm good.
Okay.
Be able to join the 27th to plan, to, to discuss.
That's your, that's your Crafton planning meeting, 27th?
Yes.
I guess I could informally join that, huh?
Yeah, the content here would probably build quite strongly from the, what's already here. We're not coming up with anything new, really. We're just organizing information. So there shouldn't be any new information for people to have to learn. But we do usually, when we have these workshops, we schedule them after our planning commission meeting and we do a run through. So everyone is familiar with what we're presenting.
Usually we assign slides so that everyone has a speaking role.
That's good.
Yeah, but I think this, because this is something that I, I feel pretty strongly about and the way my schedule is right now gets busier later towards May, I would probably be putting these together well in advance. So everyone should have a chance to look through and get familiar with anything that they, that they, that they want to talk about. So hopefully we won't be you know, it's nice to do that run through the day before, but it shouldn't be shouldn't be slides that no one's seen until that day. Make sure that they're shared in advance.
That's great.
All right, well, do we want to do we want to say the 28th tentatively? And we'll just check that with Eric and make sure that he can attend as well. And do we want to take a vote and just go ahead and, and ask to book that borough? Or do we want to take any? Does anyone feel like they need a few days to, to check schedules or verify the availability? Are we just all good with the 28th?
I am good with the 28th.
I can be available.
Okay, well, I'm good with committing to the 28th, so.
I'm good on 28th, I have nothing.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and set up a workshop. Webinar style, informational. For the 28th, we've usually done seven o'clock for those workshops. Do we want to stick with seven or do we, do we want to do 6:30?
Well, 6:30 might help me. That's just my vote, but.
I think we could do 6:30. I think that would be fine.
6:30 is fine with me.
Okay. And then I can pull some of this into some information for a flyer, but would anybody want to help put that together into finalized format for, to use as a flyer that we have the borough put out on the Savvy Citizen on the, on the 22nd for Earth Day?
What kind of help do you need?
We assign that to Eric. I know he's got graphic skills.
Yes.
I'll tell Eric, we'll give him some content. He can make it into a flyer.
Yeah, I was gonna say I can contribute, but I'm not the most creative when it comes to stuff like that.
Okay. Well, I would love to see this go forward. I think it's got I think there are a lot of potential benefits and I think our, our communities have so many residents who have a lot of skills and a lot of information to offer and would just love to have more ways to implement those ideas. You know, our, our community is really, we have small communities, but the community is run by, by the residents. And I think this is a great fit for us. It's just me, but I'd really like to see this happen.
I agree.
I agree.
Kirsten, do you want to just let everyone know which, what slides you need help with if you get an outline put together? I don't know how best to yeah, put, put the slideshow together, but especially with such a good outline here, I don't think it needs to necessarily be all you.
It'll be, it'll be pretty simple to start an outline with this and then I'll, I'll post it and share it with you guys. And I'm sure I'll ask for other planning commissioners to help collect some good images or photos to put in. Or maybe turn some of those case studies from places like Millvale and Atna. And, you know, there's a, there are PDFs that are posted for each of those and there's information online. Just turn those into a slide rather than a PDF sheet. That would be really helpful.
Yeah, that sounds great. Just let us know which ones you need.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll start again. I'll start a framework for it and then, and then ask you guys to take on certain slides.
Good.
Sounds good to me.
Well, that worked pretty well. Good conversation about eco districts. Do we want to stay on that or do we want to wrap up and, and move on to reviewing our minutes?
I'm good to move on.
Yeah, I'm good.
And thank you for sharing your screen. I don't, my computer was just
No problem.
So we have the November joint meeting minutes, which was our last meeting with Ingram. So I wanted to bring those up to, to review and approve. I know I had no, no edits on this. I'd already looked it over.
Yeah, I don't either.
I'm good.
Same. I think I had reviewed these before, too.
Right, you fixed them and I redid them.
Thanks, Rich.
All right, well, I will motion to approve.
I can.
And then we already approved our Crafton minutes. We did that early on when Eric was still here. So that next item on our agenda is already done.
Good.
And then I think the last item on our agenda was to discuss a possible April workshop and we just did that with the eco districts. So I think that wraps up all of the, all the agenda items. Before we go to citizen comments, does anyone have anything else that we missed?
No.
No.
Nothing.
Do we have any citizen comments? We'll open it back up again.
This is Greg. I don't have anything. Nice work, though, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for being here. Okay, well, if no one else has anything to add, then I think we can motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks. We'll see you again next month. We'll share, we'll share our login. We'll share that invite with Ingram if you guys would like to join us for our run through the day before. But I'll see you for a workshop.
It should be the same Zoom link from today.
Oh, okay.
Just to put that out there.
Okay.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.